Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I am Fenobia Dallas, Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. Public comments are permitted during the designated time on the agenda. This allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. This meeting is videotaped, so it's important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of a majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions, special land uses, or site plans made by the Planning Commission are then forwarded to City Council for disposition. Are there any questions? Staff Golden, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brayley.
Present.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Hanley. Commissioner Zurko. Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Nightengale.
Present.
Commissioner Ostash.
Present.
Commissioner Dallas.
Present.
Madam, you have a form.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from October 26, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to support.
Seconded.
I have a motion to approve and seconded to approve the minutes from October 26, 2021. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. The minutes from October 26, 2021 are approved. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda for November 23, 2021.
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for November 23, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Our agenda for November 23, 2021 is approved. The next item on our agenda is public comment. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak to the Commission about comments in general of any concerns they may have that come under the jurisdiction of the Commission, you may come to the podium at this point. Please state your name and address for the Record. Is there anyone here who would like to comment for the public comment section of our agenda? Is anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? Thank you. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, our new business. The first item on our new business is case J21-0108, the 101 North Water Street Parking Lot Site Plan Approval for Parking Lot Development for the Second National Bank Residential Development Project. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
All righty, thank you. Good evening, Council or Commission. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Eric Keogh. I am Real Estate Development Manager with Michigan Community Capital. And also with us today are Nate Lindsay, who is our architect with Kramer Design, and Mike Darga, engineer with Giffords Webster. So I'm thinking what I could do is just give a brief overview of the project and kind of MCC and who we are, and then if there's more detailed questions on the site plan, Nate and Mike would be able to assist a little bit more. So just to give you a little bit of an overview, you can... Oh, do I have a clicker? Oh, my gosh. Okay. There you go. Okay, so you can't read that, obviously, from afar, but...
No.
No. Just to give you a little bit of a background about us as a developer, we are a 501(c)(3) started in 2004, and we do development projects across the state of Michigan. So right now, we have mixed-use projects going on in Cadillac, Luddington, Mount Pleasant, Lansing, Flint, and obviously Saginaw, which we're working on right now. So we have, we also have kind of a lending and community development arm. So between the development and the lending portion, we've been a part of $750 million worth of development within the state and have been assisted in 672 multifamily housing units, with more of those coming online. So we have a lot of experience doing this type of development in the state of Michigan in these types of projects where it isn't entirely market rate, where you're not getting like the rates that you would in Ann Arbor or downtown Detroit, but it isn't a low-income housing project. What we focus on is, we call it missing middle housing. So we target developments that are going to be hitting 80% to 120% of the area's median income. So we fill that gap between the low-income housing developments and the luxury market rate developments, and we do that across the state. Just a quick overview of our partners for this project. Kramer Design, based out of Detroit, and they've done, you know, they're kind of the historic developer in Detroit as far as architects go. So we're really excited to be working with them. We brought on Spence Brothers as our contractor, so they would be, once this project gets underway, Spence Brothers would be the construction manager overseeing everything. And Tritora is our environmental consultant, so anything brownfield-related, asbestos abatement, hazmat, that sort of thing, Tritora is responsible for assisting us with that. I'm probably preaching to the choir a little bit, but this is a beautiful historic building. To me, it's the most iconic building in the region. You know, if you think about the Great Lakes Bay region, this is the building that comes to mind, in my opinion. It was designed by Wirt Roland, who did the Guardian Building in Detroit and several other, you know, internationally-known buildings. He's a very well-known architect. As well as the terracotta on the building was Corrado Parducci, who is also a very renowned sculptor and terracotta installer. So there's a ton of history in the actual building itself, and then further to that, the Second National Bank, obviously, was kind of instrumental in developing this region. You know, it helped fund the timber industry and that sort of thing, so there's a lot of history in that building. And we're, you know, we're really excited to keep that history going and to kind of bring it back to its glory days. I'm not sure if anybody has on the Commission has been able to be inside recently, but if you look in the bottom-left corner, there is a floor that is still outfitted as if it's the 1960s. So you can see kind of the silver lights on top, and it actually has like long shag carpeting. It was like a very hip lawyer's office at one point, but it's still, it's still in place. And a lot of the floors are mostly empty right now, so we're looking at replacing the entire HVAC system, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, all of that needs to be replaced. Full remediation and looking into asbestos abatement, lead abatement. There's a lot of issues with, if you can see in the bottom-right, trees growing into the, you know, into the facade. So, you know, there's concern about how deep those roots are and what we can do to, you know, keep everything intact. So needless to say, a lot of work needs to be done on the building. And you can see some of the historic details. So what we're planning on doing here is renovating it into mixed-use, so the first and second floors would be utilized for Huntington Bank. They would be moving to a corner of the building, and then the existing historic lobby would be used as an event space. These are kind of the look of some of the apartments that we're planning on installing on the...
You have five more minutes.
Okay, thanks. Doing the third and 12 floors. We're actually planning on keeping the 1970s building on Genesee. We call it the Annex. At first, we were thinking about tearing it down, maybe putting in a parking deck or something, but as we walked through it, we actually saw a lot of potential. We weren't sure how the layout would look in terms of apartments, but they're actually really cool. The ceilings are really tall, so we think it could kind of have that vibe in the bottom-right of kind of a more of an industrial-type loft. So we're going to have like the Annex, which has its own kind of '70s or loft vibe with the, kind of next to the historic traditional tower apartments. We're planning on having bike storage, a fitness center, trash chute, mail and package room. We're looking at installing a grab-and-go market for tenants to grab food or fresh items or like basic convenience items when they need them. These are the layouts, which, they're hard to see on the screen, so you can kind of review them, but it kind of shows, it's a mix of studios, one beds, two beds, and then a couple of three bedrooms. And the rent range goes from 800 to around 1,700, from studios up to three bedrooms. So based on the MISTHA calculations and area median income, it's affordable for houses making 27,500 up to 58,000 and above. So this is kind of the, what we're looking at in terms of the site plan. If you go in that green space on the left there, that's kind of what is up for discussion tonight. We're looking at putting surface parking in on that spot.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thanks. Putting surface parking in on the spot to the, I guess, next to the river, which would cover some of the parking needed for the tenants. And then we're also working with the county to rent out spaces for the additional tenants in the municipal, the county parking structure down the road on Washington, kind of across the street from the temple. And this is an overview of what the renovations would look like. And then the project timeline, we're hoping to start construction June of 2022 with a grand opening in November 23. So I'll leave this site kind of drawing up for discussion if we have additional questions, but thank you for, thank you for listening, and we'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to comment on this particular case? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve case J21-0108, the north, excuse me?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. The 101 North Water Street Parking Lot Site Plan for Parking Lot Development for the Second National Bank Residential Redevelopment Project with the following contingencies. Number one, successfully securing additional parking from Saginaw County. Number two, approval of the site plan by the Public Services Department. And number three, City Council approval of the development agreement for the land transfers.
So moved, Moore.
Support.
It has moved and seconded to approve this site plan. Are there any questions, discussion from the Commission members? Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a copy? Can we get a copy?
Of this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That's all I wanted.
I have one question for city staff. With the park with Morley Plaza and how you want to have the lands transferred, how did that happen in the first place? How did the bank get the property in the first place? How long ago did that happen? Because split down the middle, right?
Correct, and I can't speak necessarily to the history of it. Huntington has owned the essentially half of Morley Plaza that's closest to that building, or it's been in possession of one of the banks as you go back from Huntington to Citizen, well, Huntington First Merit, Citizen, Second National, that whole history. They've held that property and have leased it to the city under a long-term lease agreement. So I, I'm uncertain if the city ever actually had any ownership interest in it, but it's been in the possession of the bank for some time.
When you get into the parking lot, with the, I know there's some issues with, I don't know, land basin or something, how close can you go to the Saginaw River with new developments? Because I know it's restricted in some areas.
It's only restricted by the flood plain, but the city wants to retain at least 18 feet strip for the Iron Bell Trail to go through there.
Good, that was going to be one of my questions.
So, for the architecture, my understanding is we're going to still have our Morley Park, right? You're not going to take it. You're just going to give us some more space, right? Okay. Thank you. See if I had it in front of me, Mr. Bob.
Well, you, could you get your packet?
I got it. My package don't do the justice that they did.
Please give us your name and address.
My name is Nate Lindsay. I'm with Kramer Design Group, and we're at 1420 Washington, no, Broadway in Detroit. Sorry.
Thank you.
With regards to Morley Plaza, the space will still be the public plaza that you're seeing there. 30 feet of it that directly abuts the building will be retained as a patio for the building, but the trade-off is that there'll be the public space extending from Morley Plaza all the way down to the park and connecting with that bike trail that's along the river there. So it's not labeled on this particular drawing, but right along the river, you can see a lighter-colored path, and that runs down to another path that comes up alongside the bridge, making that waterfront accessible. And then the other new path extends directly from the center of Morley Plaza to that river there.
So there's going to be... Yeah, thank you. Up the middle, and then one right here, and then this area would become part of the bank parcel, just this little adjacent area.
Can you do that on that screen?
And you said there was... You got it. You said that's like a 30-foot section? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
The 30-foot section basically runs along the building right here. The pathway to the river extends from the center of Morley Plaza. It's basically centered on the block that's there and goes all the way up to the river chair. And then this path is maintained per that requirement. And there's a small path here that brings you back to the sidewalk that gets onto the bridge.
So the top left is parking, or patio, I mean.
The top right here is the patio.
Oh, what's up there?
This is just park space. It's just an extension of Morley to the river.
In the white box on the top left?
Saginaw future building.
Okay, okay. I thought it might have been another building. Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
So if I'm seeing this correctly, where the trees are there, because that's an existing walkway, isn't it, right now?
This is just a lawn here.
Right, right. Because that's the Community Foundation Building that's right there. Yeah. Yeah. Because what I'm trying to envision what they do in the summertime is we have a huge event all summer long, Friday Night Live, and so that whole section where you're proposing the parking is normally empty. And then there's always a section next to the sidewalk, next to that building, that's kind of where they have their refreshment tent. And then even like on the side of your building, that 30 feet is fine, because that still is not, there's still a lot of area left. Everybody kind of sits to the middle, so I'm trying to envision this myself, because it is a pretty big deal for the city. But that would be a nice, this would be nice with the...
We did keep that in mind when we laid this out, so you can see the dance floor and the stage are still there.
Yep, okay.
And then there's currently a walkway that extends this diagonal here. By removing that, we consolidate a larger open space that's directly oriented toward the stage for that.
Okay, okay, okay.
So on your diagram, excuse me, Tom Brayley, where do the food trucks and all that go during Friday Night Live?
They're along Washington.
I think they would be perhaps the cul-de-sac here.
Jack, how's that look?
We would have to negotiate, so something would have to happen. You're really cutting this park in a really small package, because the back part where the parking lot is, actually, that's used for Friday Night Live also. But then you got to look at, you know, I have to look at long range, how long Friday Night Live will exist versus a project that could last for another 50 years or so, 100. So it's going to be, have to be a trade-off, but you really, you think you're giving something to the park, but you're really taking a lot away. Because that whole parking lot is used by, as part of the park, when we do use it.
Which parking lot?
The one that they're proposing.
Along the river. That's what I was trying to, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get...
That's where all the nonprofit, that's where all the nonprofit goes, that's where the porta-johns go. That goes, some of the vendors, not the vendors, they have the adult refreshment area there. The kids' area was back there. There's a lot of activity that was there.
Yeah. I think you made a good point where it's like, you know, to make this possible, we need to have parking. And I'm the one that, I like parking the least, you know, surface parking the least, but, and even I'm saying like, like you're saying, there is that trade-off. But to Nate's point, we are trying to look at, I think with the open space and maybe reconfiguring some of the Friday Night Lights or the live event, because we came and kind of walked around while it was going on. So I think maybe reconfiguring some of the layout of it, we could be able to still fit some of it, fit it in there.
Maybe, it's maybe, it depends, you know. Depends what night you go there.
Right.
But usually, I mean, I don't, I can't see holding up a project like this for six weeks and six Fridays in the summer, so it's a trade-off kind of, but it's really going to alter what we do.
So I have a suggestion. Pride should probably get with them and then walk and see it, because in my head, I can picture it, but on, I mean, it's in my head. And so I'm a visual person, and I'm looking at it, and I see where we can make some adjustments, but it's not my call.
Yeah, it's going to be a...
You know, and it's a pride thing with the bank.
Yeah.
And I think everybody wants to collaborate with each other, so I'm into collaboration.
Yeah, we want things, we want to make things to work, but we want it to work for the community also.
I think we can revamp this to show this area extending toward the river as a bit of a midway and capture some of those...
Yeah, because, because right now, you can go all the way down, down the whole Water Street on a bicycle now. You can be part of that for that Iron Bell Trail, correct? Where would the Iron Bell Trail go under?
My understanding is that we shouldn't be going under the bridge, so that's why we're looping it back up to the sidewalk.
Which is good.
But how, but where would it end? Where would it start?
I don't know what happens beyond the Morley Building there, but based on diagrams we had seen, that was the sort of planned route.
Because I don't think there's anything there now, right, for the Iron Bell Trail?
Correct.
There's nothing there yet.
Well, isn't there a sidewalk along there, though?
There's a sidewalk right down the middle, right behind, where you have the entrance off of Genesee Street on the back of it, on the back of the bank. There's a sidewalk. Actually, you can drive, basically, you can drive.
You could, yeah.
You could drive a car down there right now. But where you put the, where you have the greenery in the middle of the map, that's like, that's gone.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that runs right along the river.
There is one, there is one at the river, yeah, but there's another.
And that's basically where the Iron Bell Trail would go.
Okay, you're talking about that part down the river.
Yes, yeah, but we would get 18 feet total of it.
Of it, yeah. Because that goes behind the, that goes behind the Saginaw Community Building too, that trail, trails, I mean, the sidewalks are over there.
Question. So the 18 feet is non-negotiable?
No, it is.
My mind.
Thank you. I just wondered.
That's up to you.
I'm not saying negotiate, I just was wondering if I was set in stone.
So approval of this would be, as Chair Rod, contingent on several factors. One of those would be a development agreement that considers this land exchange where the city would take ownership of the portion of Morley Plaza that doesn't, that is not currently protected parkland, and in exchange for the parcel on which the proposed parking lot would go on. The terms of that development agreement, of course, is subject to council approval and would take into consideration many things that we've been discussing, like the 18-foot easement.
Okay. Just for your information, it was in 1982 that the city sold that to Huntington, or whoever First Merit at the time, or Second National.
Second National, then.
Was that...
But the city did that, correct?
According to the assessing records.
So it was like, kind of, I know what you're saying, though. What year was the addition put on the back?
1978.
78, yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay. Any further questions?
No questions.
I'm sorry. Staff Golden, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brayley?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Can I abstain?
Yes, you can, but you must give us a reason. No, so for abstentions and negatives, correct? We have a reason?
There should be a reason stated on the record, and it should be with Commission consent.
Oh.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nightengale?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostash?
Yes.
And Chair Dallas?
Yes.
What's the result? I'm sorry, what's the result?
Five, how many, are you, six?
Six.
Yes.
So approval, all right. So that site plan review has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is case J21-0109, the 409 Dearborn Street Site Plan Approval for an automotive service station and car wash. Is there an applicant or a representative present?
Oh, I should.
Can you please state your name and address? And again, you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay, good evening, everybody. John Maury with DNM Site Surveying and Engineering, representing Tribe Incorporated. This is basically a redevelopment of the existing Marathon Gas Station at 409 Dearborn Like I said, it's an existing Marathon Gas Station and car wash, and what we are proposing to do is a 3,300-square-foot convenience store and reconfigure the five pump islands into 10 fueling dispensaries. The demolition will include basically tearing down the existing self-service portion of the, of the car wash. Is everybody familiar with this? Do you want me to show you the other drawing?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so the existing, the existing facility just has a small pay, geez, it almost looks like an old photo mat type of structure with the fueling stations right in that area. The existing self-serve car wash is in this area right here, and that will be demoed. Right now, the whole site is paved, right now. They will keep the existing, I guess I got this upside down, sorry.
I thought you did.
The existing car wash, the full, you know, the drive-through will stay, okay? And so with the new configuration, then, it'll have that 3,300-square-foot convenience store and where you pay for your gas with the five fueling stations, then... and where you pay for your gas, with the five fueling stations then reconfigured. They're going to use the existing tanks that are in the ground right now. And so, the hurdle on this thing was, obviously, the stormwater detention system. What we have proposed here is a, basically, a three-thousand cubic foot detention requirement. We'll have seven, three sections of seventy-foot forty-eight-inch pipe where we'll store the stormwater underground. It'll outlet into an existing structure, and then, we'll have an outlet control structure that will come out into the twelve-inch on Dearborn Street. As you can see, that existing Car Wash then would stay. So, new sanitary tap and new storm, a new water tap coming out on the Dearborn Street. The parking requirements, we worked with Bob on this, because you have a stacking situation here for, you know, fueling, and so, you would have, I don't know if you guys can see this, but the stacking system would be, for the Car Wash, we've got fourteen cars that would stack along the, let's say, southerly and easterly perimeter of the site. And then, each fueling station has a thirty-car stack, and so, basically, we have three, three cars at each pump, you know, with one of the cars having, you know, getting the gas at the time, but two behind it. That's, that's a lot, but that's what the requirement was, and so, we met that criteria. So, the parking count then was sixteen required, and we actually have twenty-one provided. So, just like any other gas station, you have people waiting to be next in line, you know, kind of like over here on State Street for yours. Okay, so, we, basically, the whole site is impervious right now, and we are, basically, redeveloping the existing gas station site. We do have, oh, the system that, that we have in here for spill prevention, it's basically, you know, utilizing our Storm Tech Oil-Water separator. It has the capabilities of holding fifty-one gallons, and just like any spill, just like they're under right now, there's spill prevention with Eagle. If there's a spill, they're to contact Eagle, the State of Michigan, and abide by the rules and requirements of...
You have five minutes left.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, like, a nice little development, reconfiguring that whole site, and hopefully, it'll be at least the last set over here on South Michigan.
Question, so, with the new pipes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Case J twenty-one zero-one zero-nine, the four oh nine Dearborn Street Site Plan Approval for an Automobile Service Station and Car Wash, pending approval by the Engineering Department?
Motion, Brayley?
Seconded, has been seconded to approve this site plan, are there any questions?
Yes, this new, these new drain pipes that go in, John, and they connect into the existing?
Yes.
That has already been, obviously, thought about, it's not going to overwhelm the old structure versus what new goes in the ground?
Actually, right now, it all drains, but there was no detention.
Okay.
And we have over three thousand cubic feet of detention out there.
So, that's an improvement, that's an improvement.
Right, and the outlet is only, it's a six-inch coming out, whereas our pipe is six, eight, twelve, and then, you know, this big underground storage system that's, that's going to basically hold that water until it slowly makes its way out of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, this would be an increase, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm going to ask it. How many jobs does that create? Because you went from just a gas station and a Car Wash, which is smaller, to a convenience store, to some more pumps, to some more people, so how many people?
Well, I would probably say that we're probably four to five at the time working. Probably have two, you'll have the manager, you'll have, you have a couple of tellers, and then, you'll probably have somebody at the Car Wash, so I'd probably say four to five at a time.
Just wanted to know.
What is actually functioning there or not?
The gas station.
Just the gas station, or the Car Wash?
Yeah, the Car Wash is still functioning, and then, obviously, we're going to demo the self-serve Car Wash days.
Oh, yeah, those, yeah.
Yeah, those will come out.
So, it is currently functioning as a petroleum station?
Yes.
People, okay, well, and can you tell me, how old are those existing fuel tanks?
You know, I don't know that, they're staying, the tank, there's only one tank in there right now. And so, I didn't have any records on the existing tank, but apparently, that's going to be enough to service those five, five new stations, five new tank, or five new...
Well, I guess my concern is more the longevity, is there going to come a point where they're going to have to take and pull those tanks, and put new tanks in?
I kind of thought they were going to have to add another tank anyway. So, we're going to have five new fueling stations, and so, basically, that's ten new, ten new lanes. But, it's, I think it's thirty thousand cubic feet of tank in there right now, which is a large tank. It's a large tank.
Is there anyone that you could contact on our behalf, and maybe find out what their plan is moving forward as to exactly how they determine they will manage the tank issue?
Okay, I'd like to do that. I can contact Eagle, they obviously have, within their spill prevention plan, all that data should be on record right now with the state. So, I'll have to dig it up and get it to Bob, and then get it to you.
Yeah, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fuel tanks and the system and the inspections and everything would be regulated by Eagle, not the city?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Staff Golden, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brayley?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nightingale?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostache?
Yes.
Chair Dallas?
Yes.
Has been approved.
Thank you. This site plan approval is approved, thank you. Next item on our agenda is Old Business, Master Plan Status Update.
So, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's happening with the master plan process. We have somewhat shifted gears in the sense that there were several studies that were part of the total master plan. One of them was the parking study, then we did the transportation study, then we did the housing, or the housing study at first. We moved into getting public comment from individuals, or citizens within the community to get their input. Then, after that, we had to somewhat switch gears, because part of the plan included a Parks and Recreation Plan, and there's a deadline for that to be submitted to the D N R. That's an important integral part of us being able to get grant funds through the D N R. One example is the Wicks Park Project that we're doing with the bike trail, the Ironbell Trail down there. And so, we have to get that in by February, I think it's the end of February, whatever. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what the schedule is going to be, the, a draft has been put together, and staff is going through, and making some corrections and getting input. And then, we would, we'll provide that to you folks as well. And then, when, we'll get a review and comments back, and then, the, we'll work on some of the updated action items and priorities, which are included in the plan. The final draft will get reviewed, then we'll have council public meeting advisement, and that takes, and that requires a thirty-day wait. Then, City Council would have, hold a public hearing, and we're shooting for January tenth meeting. The City Council would adopt it at their next meeting, January twenty-fourth, and then, we would post it to the D N R February first. During that time, though, we would also be looking at putting together the draft for the master plan, putting all these studies together. And so, we hope to have some sort of a draft put together by December twentieth, and then, we could start the review process there.
For the master plan?
Yes, with the idea of adopting that now in May, just because of all the public hearing and public comment requirements as part of that. Last evening, at the City Council meeting, the City Council approved an extension of the master plan to June first, just to give us a little wiggle room.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
One of the comments that I have, and I guess the concern I have, as I'm reviewing the draft of the Parks and Recreation Plan, the survey information that we secured from the public, all of that survey information is in the Parks and Recreation Plan. Half the survey responses are actually targeted for the master plan, and not necessarily Parks and Recreation. So, my concern is that if we're putting all of this data into the Parks and Recreation Plan, what do we put into the master plan? Are we putting the same information?
Well, I guess you have to separate the two plans, because one goes to the D N R, but then, you also have the master plan, which then incorporates part of the Parks and Recreation Plan, so, in essence, they overlap.
Well, and I, again, I'm wrestling with this, because I'm looking through the, again, the survey that we sent out, and this, again, is for, I think, our future concerns, where when we sent out a survey for the master plan, we should designate, these questions are for the master plan, and then, these questions are for Parks and Recreation. Because in actuality, questions one through five on the master plan survey we sent out have nothing to do with Parks and Recreation.
No, but they have to do with quality of life.
I understand, but I think that we want to tweak that data just a little bit. My concern is because there's information that's going into the Parks and Recreation Plan that I don't feel is really pertinent to Parks and Recreation. I understand the concern about the overall living conditions in the city, but I think if we really want to target our Parks and Recreation needs, we need to make sure that the questions that pertain to Parks and Recreation directly go into that plan, and the other questions are saved for the master plan. And those comments, I'm actually, as I'm going through the plan and making those notations, I'm actually going to create a separate document and send it to everyone, so they can see my concerns. I think, again, that, I guess my concern is that if we put all of this information in Parks and Recreation, then what do we have left for the master plan? Are we going to put the same survey data in the master plan, and then reinterpret that data? I mean, I'd rather see us only use, again, question six, nine, ten, and eleven for the Parks and Recreation Plan, because those are the questions that pertain to Parks and Recreation that were in the master plan survey, okay? And that's just some general comments from me. And again, I'm feeling uncomfortable with how the data is being compiled into the Parks and Recreation Plan that don't necessarily pertain to Parks and Recreation, so...
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. Just keep in mind, though, that there's also the goals and objectives and an action plan that can also be incorporated that kind of focus, you know, some of these things, so...
Right, okay, yes. Anyone else have any comments about the master plan status at this point?
I do. So, this total thing won't be done until June, so, any changes that we've made, or talked about making, won't actually go into effect until after that time. What I'm asking about is the housing, the renaming of a certain part of town. It won't go into effect until after June first. I know you can't pick and choose, but I'm just asking.
Well, so, the master plan drives the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance specifies areas within the city that we want in terms of land use.
Right.
And so, I think those, the comments and, and action plans that we put together, then, will help to formulate the way in which we revamp the zoning ordinance to address some of those needs. Does that answer your question?
No.
June first, yes.
June first? I mean, I was here was June first, because it, let's be real, when spring comes, if people are going to be allowed to do anything in that certain area, we got to get in, and they need, we know we got to clean it up. So, if we say it June first, then I understand that.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, I don't know, I had to...
I understand what you're saying, I, I don't know if it's, I think it's more of a moving thing rather than a specific...
Right, because a lot of it depends on us, to actually approve the master plan, and then, move it to the City Council for their review process.
I know that part, but I was just trying to see.
And there's also, I mean, there's the adoption of the master plan.
That's right.
But after the master plan is adopted, there might need to be subsequent changes made to the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
That would require additional steps be taken on certain...
So, it can be go beyond.
The zoning ordinance is the enforcement of the master plan.
Right.
That's kind of a moving thing.
Okay.
Question, I have a question on that. Can we, if we know what some of those zoning changes might be, because we know what the master plan is going to look like or possible adoption, can we have maybe some of that preliminaryed?
Absolutely, we should be working on all of those things all the time. And, and we do, I mean, we work on changes to the zoning ordinance all the time.
Right, okay.
It's, it's not just a...
Kind of parallels.
Go here, 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 I mean, it's, it's a moving...
It's not linear, yeah, it's not linear.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments about the master plan? The next item on our agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? It has been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at six forty-nine.